Welcome to Meet the Candidates, a League of Women Voters ABC forum for candidates running for Ramsey mayor and city council. Thank you to the candidates, Ramsey Municipal Center, and QCTV for making this event possible. This year, League of Women Voters is holding our Meet the Candidates forums without an audience to avoid COVID-19 spread. This has been an election year like no other. So, let me now remove my mask to better enable you, the audience, and the candidates to understand me. I'm Wes Falkinett, member of Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids Area League of Women Voters and a resident of neighboring Andover. I do not have a vote for the Ramsey City Council. The League sponsors this forum along with its cosponsors, the North Suburban Optimists Club and the Metro North Chamber of Commerce. Each of the candidates were invited to this forum. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. The League does help citizens become informed voters and advocates for important issues. That's what this forum is about, informing the voters. If you're interested in the League, visit our webpage at LWVABCMN.org. Women, men, and young people are invited to join. Now, in the 2020 election, Ramsey residents will elect a mayor, one council member at large, and council members for wards two and four. The ward two seat is currently held by Mark Kuzma. Brian Walker and Matt Westehoff are this year's ward two candidates. The candidates will answer three introductory questions which they received in advance, followed by questions submitted by the public via our website, questions of importance to League of Women Voters, North Suburban Optimists Club, and Metro North Chamber of Commerce. We will end with closing statements. Answers are limited to one minute. Candidates will take turns being the first to answer a question. So, let's get started with our first introductory question, and it will go to Matt. Matt, please describe your background and community involvement.
Thanks, Wes, and thanks to the League of Women Voters. This is, as you mentioned, a very unique year for an election, and it's good to get out in front of people and, you know, have an opportunity to talk to the community. And at the root of your question is community involvement, and I think that's an important thing for us to remember. In my time, I have been on the Ramsey Planning Commission for over two years now. I've been involved with the city in that regard, and I've been able to listen to residents in terms of not just their complaints, but also in terms of what we can do to make it better, their ideas, and how we can maintain the rural balance that we have with the suburban amenities that we want. Professionally, I run an IT company that's been very successful. It's one of the fastest-growing IT companies in Minnesota. I have been there for about 10 years, and in that tenure, I have basically tripled the headcount of our office, and we have about eight times the revenue that we did when I started. Outside of that, I was on a board for a nonprofit where I was elected president for a two-year term. My wife is a volunteer and Girl Scout troop leader, which naturally means I count a lot of cookie boxes every year. And I still believe that involvement, though, is more than a checkbox on her resume. It's not necessarily being a politician with an agenda. It's to have the ideas that we want to continue to have what's best for everybody in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And Brian, you get the same first question. Describe your background and community involvement.
It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm a business owner myself. I manage commercial properties and do commercial property maintenance. I've built golf courses, I've remodeled golf courses, I've ran golf courses all over the country, and I've had to manage budgets at every one of those facilities. I've actually worked for a city while I was rebuilding a golf course, so I understand maybe a little bit more about how the workings inside the city staff go on. I'm a blue-collar guy. I say things I shouldn't say sometimes. I get my hands dirty, and I'm not afraid to dive in or do anything. I got involved in Ramsey during a rezoning issue. I rallied 400 residents that opposed a rezoning. We got that rezoning shut down. And then after that, I started having residents call me with other problems that were going on within the city, and that's when I decided that I needed to run.
Thank you, Brian. And you get the next question, which is, why are you seeking this office?
As I just stated, during the rezoning issue, our council member who currently represents us, I contacted him, and he never really responded to what the residents wanted. He never even acknowledged what the residents wanted. He had told us that he didn't know how he was going to vote on an issue. And if you go and look at the 2018 budget online with City of Ramsey, in the first 10 pages, it has a flow chart, and at the very top of that flow chart is the residents. The residents are the bosses in this city. And the council members are there to represent the citizens that put them there. And when that didn't happen, that's when I decided that the residents needed somebody to speak up for them.
Thank you. And Matt, the same question to you. Why are you seeking this office?
Yeah, and I think that's a great question, and one I get asked whenever I get the chance to talk to any particular residents out there. You know, logistically speaking, it's one where my term as president was up, and I had quite a few of my friends and my family, my coworkers, and residents and folks at the city asking me why I'm not running. And, you know, it's one of those things where, as a parent, I always want to be proud of the city that I live in. And being a candidate allows me to really help focus on the fact that I want the city to remain a positive place for my cities, my kids to grow up in. And I think that's really important to think about. And for me, it was never about running against an opponent. It wasn't any one particular person that I disagreed with. For me, it's much more about running for city council rather than against someone. And I think that's important because there's so much division around what we do in politics and in our world today. It doesn't have to be that way. Sometimes we can just do what's right.
And Mr. Westehoff, you get the third of the introductory questions, which is, what are your goals for the City of Ramsey's future?
Yeah, it's another great question. And, you know, one of the things that I learned over the couple of years that I've been on the Planning Commission and working with the comprehensive plan of 2040 as well is, you know, it's not something that we can just focus on Ramsey. Yes, we put Ramsey first, but we have to work with our neighbors, with both the state and federal government and the county on our roads, which need repair. We have to work on other common grounds and compromises when it comes to development, and work with more than one party to make some sort of progress. And honestly, it's one of those things that, right now, it's just a tough place in the world. And I think even as a resident and as a parent, it's something where we can continue to be neighbors with each other. And a lot of times, I feel like that gets lost. And that's kind of one of the goals, is to keep Ramsey a community of neighbors as opposed to a community of opponents.
Thank you. And then the same question to Mr. Walker, which is, what are your goals for the City of Ramsey's future?
Thank you. I believe that we need to watch our spending within the city. Since the 2018 budget, I believe, our taxes, 2017, I'm sorry, our taxes went up 23% in the City of Ramsey, averaging about 6% a year. And most of our residents don't get a 6% a year raise in their salaries. So I think we need to curb that. And if it takes hours and hours and hours of going through line items on the budget, finding out where we can save money, I think that's what we need to do. We need to be smart with our spending. We need to be transparent with it. We need to bring more businesses into Ramsey and be business-friendly. And when somebody wants to come in, we need to let them decide how they're going to develop their property, because businesses are in business to develop properties and make money.
Thank you. And speaking of businesses, the first of the questions you haven't seen yet comes from our cosponsors, the Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Walker, this one will go to you, I believe, and that is, please describe any experiences you have owning or managing a business, as well as special advocacy efforts on behalf of the local small business community.
As I said in my opening statement, I do own my own business. I've actually owned several businesses in areas that I've lived in. Not only do I manage my own business, but I manage properties for other businesses to flourish in. And so I feel like I have a little bit of an advantage in knowing how to keep businesses happy and doing what we need to do to not only attract them, but to retain them. I'm very big on small business. I love having the small businesses, the mom-and-pa shops around town, and that's the kind of businesses that I'd like to see down here around the core.
Thank you. And then same question goes to Mr. Westehoff, which again is, please describe any experiences you have owning or managing a business, as well as special advocacy efforts on behalf of the local small business community.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And, you know, as I mentioned, I run an IT company. I've been there for about nine years, and we focus on the B2B community and building small businesses through IT infrastructure. So, to understand what a business goes through, especially in the era of COVID, is something that I am deeply familiar with. You know, I've seen many of my clients prosper greatly because of COVID and their particular industry, but at the same time, I've seen some that have had to shutter because of it. So being able to be compassionate about that, have empathy, and understand that there's more to it than just budgets sometime. Yes, budgets are absolutely important, but there's a personal piece to this that really matters. And one of the things that I want to focus on for us as a city is being very telecommuter-friendly and making sure that we have the infrastructure to support a workforce that can work from home, because this is not going to end anytime soon. And the more we can take care of the workers, the more their companies will want to come work with us.
Thank you. And second, the questions from our cosponsor, the Chamber of Commerce, again, a business question goes to Mr. Westehoff first, and that is, if elected, what would you do to provide a healthy business climate in this community?
Yeah, and, you know, it's one of those things where honesty and transparency go a long way, and, you know, Brian and I agree on this matter, I would imagine, and transparency is key. I think one of the big advantages for us as a city is we don't sneak up on assessments. We don't have surprises for some of these businesses with the institution of the franchise fee. It is now something where roads can be done and managed in a very budget-friendly scenario, so these businesses don't have to worry about that sort of assessment going forward. And there are other items that are very important to that. And again, I still say that the telecommuter aspect of what we can do is something that we should continue to focus on, because small business has a hard time right now, and the more we can help grow them, the better.
Thank you. And then Mr. Walker, same question to you. If elected, what would you do to provide a healthy business climate in this community?
Thank you. As Matt said, you know, I think we both are pretty adamant about we want things to be For me, it's, as I stated earlier, there are some businesses that were coming to Ramsey that left Ramsey because of the way they were treated during the development stages of their properties. And I think that's where the city needs to get out and needs to just let the businesses do what they need to do, whether it's relaxing some sign requirements or whatever it might be, but to allow businesses to come in here and get set up and get their doors open without going through a bunch of red tape that really nobody needs to go through.
Thank you. Brian, the next question will go to you. This comes from our other cosponsor, the Optimists Club, and that is, what do you see as the greatest need or challenge for youth in Ramsey? And how would you, as an elected official, help solve this issue?
That is a great question. You know, I hear a lot of people talk about rec centers, you know, giving the kids things to do. I would be for a rec center for us if we could figure out how to fund it without raising taxes. That's really the biggest thing for me. Having our parks and rec continue to grow and to offer more opportunities for them. There's, you know, we're the rural part of this area, and, you know, to get the kids out and to understand the nature and the wildlife. And the farm aspects of it is great, too, because that's the way I was raised, and you learn a lot when you're out doing that type of thing.
Thank you. And then Matt, you get that same question, which is, what do you see as the greatest need or challenge for youth in Ramsey? And how would you, as an elected official, help solve this issue?
Yeah, and I agree with Brian. This is a surprising but also wonderful question. And it's something that, you know, off the cuff, I think one of the things that all youth struggle with, no matter who they are, where they come from, or anything that they do, is having a relationship or somebody to identify with. And I think having some sort of place of true community and having an open space for those tough conversations and being able to be open for somebody who wants to learn more about the city, or who wants to do sports, who wants to do anything, has some sort of opportunity to take a positive look on life. And, you know, one of the great things about this city is all of the parks and the trails that we have, and being able to connect all of those is a big part of something that I would love to focus on, and being able to let people, you know, wander and get their thoughts.
Thank you. And Mr. Westehoff, you'll get the next question. And sometimes people are actually kind of aware of what must be coming, because it's parks is our question, and that is, what priority do you place on the city park system? And what one new priority would you have for its next five years?
One of the things that I've learned over the years is I am not an expert at everything. And listening to staff is a big part of what we do on the Planning Commission. It's what we do professionally. It's what we do for doctors and medical advice, and listening to those professionals is key. I just read that the parks are evaluating what it looks like to replace some of the turf out in the fields with a more meadow-like experience, and that could save us anywhere between $150,000 over five years to $375,000 over 10 years. And I think that is an admirable goal. Being able to not just enhance the beauty of the space by making it more natural and more inviting, but also reducing that cost is a big part of it. And I would fully support something like that. But again, I'd kind of defer to the Parks and Recs folks who've been in this for many, many years, and people like Brian, who have so much years of experience in this, to give good advice.
Well, let's turn to Mr. Walker to answer the same question, and that would be, what priority do you place on the city's park system? And what one new priority would you have for its next five years?
Our parks are a vital part of our community. We have, I believe, 26 city parks, maybe 27 now since we just opened one last night, plus the two regional parks. Obviously, the recreation that is there is very important to young and old alike. I've actually had conversations with the Parks and Rec and the Public Works from my 30-plus years in the turf grass industry. And at the park meeting last week, it was brought up to start using some growth regulators, and they were going to do some studies on that. And if we go to using the growth regulators, in my experience, we can cut our parks budget in half and actually have a better park system for the residents to use.
Thank you. The next question will go to you. Ward two can fairly be described as mostly rural Ramsey. Your websites address this. What do you see as the proper suburban rural balance in Ramsey? And what is the key aspect of development of the community that either touches you strongest or that you foresee as being the community's biggest challenge?
Another great question. For me, I moved to Ramsey because of the rural feel. I moved to Ward two because of the rural feel that we have. I take it back to the rezoning issue that we had earlier, when everybody in that neighborhood where they wanted to rezone had at least two acres of property, and they wanted to drop in 75, 65, and 55-foot lots. And that did not fit into the character that those neighborhoods are up there. And for me, it's to maintain that, the smaller lots need to be down by Highway 10. And as you get out into Ward two, they need to stay in the larger lots so we can preserve the ruralness, because once we allow the smaller lots in there, the smaller lots are just going to take over, and then we will lose all of the rural Ramsey.
Thank you. And then same question, Mr. Westehoff. I'll truncate it a bit for you, and that is, we're talking about the suburban rural balance in Ramsey. What is the key aspect of development of the community that either touches you strongest or that you foresee as being the community's biggest challenge?
You know, honestly, I think that balance finding is a key part of it, because at some token, you have to respect the landowners. And I've heard it from several folks now that have large swaths of land, hundreds of acres. They can't farm anymore. It's not profitable for them to farm anymore, and it's time to develop that land, and they have every right to subdivide that into proper zoning. I agree that the 55-foot lots were too small. I don't feel that made sense up in the Trotbrook North area. At the same token, though, when you look at the core and we go back to the business aspect of what Ramsey wants, then we need more households. More rooftops bring in more businesses, and a lot of those things are very delicately related. Things have changed over the last year with COVID and some of the impacts that it has had, but we're also seeing more people in the city on a daily basis in midday times because more people are at home. So restaurants and things like that are more valuable.
Thank you. Gentlemen, the next three questions are all related to each other on that main issue of road streets in Ramsey. The first will go to Mr. Westehoff. Ramsey has passed a five-year franchise fee that takes effect in October as a stable funding source for road repair and management. Some have called for this to be rescinded. As a council member, will you support the franchise fee funding mechanism? And please explain why or why not.
Sure. It's no secret that I support the franchise fee. And I will readily admit that when I went to the first meeting in 2018, I was opposed to it. But then I learned more. I listened more. I listened to more residents. I listened to the feedback. And at the end of the day, it does make the most sense in terms of a stable funding source for what is vital to the community. When I started my campaign, I started a survey, and the number-one response in terms of what people wanted from the city government was actually better roads. The second was developing the core, but roads were the top priority. And the nice thing is the franchise fee puts that into effect. Now, it starts in October. It's got a five-year sunset. It's a trial. We can see how that goes, but that guarantees good protected funding for that five-year period so that we can get some roads fixed in town.
Thank you. And Mr. Walker, I'll truncate the question for you. We're talking about the franchise fee. As a council member, will you support the franchise fee funding mechanism? And please explain why or why not.
Thank you. I will not support the franchise fee that we have in place. A city has very few basic things that they need to provide the residents. The first is being the safety, the police departments, the fire departments. And the second is the roads. Right now, the city has over 13, about $13.5 million in 2020, and that's going to go to over $14 million in the general fund in 2021. And if we cannot find $2 million a year out of $14 million to do the roads, then we have a serious budget problem that we need to address. Adding another tax to the residents is not the answer to it.
Thank you. Second to the related questions will go to Mr. Walker. Should the final decision on these types of funding choices be made by the voters or by the council after public input and discussion is received?
That is a great question. I believe that it should go to the voters. Anytime that you're going to add a special tax onto them, I think it ought to go to the voters and let them decide what they want to do with it. As elected officials to represent the residents, I've already come to terms with myself that I may have to make votes that the residents want that I personally don't want to do. So if it went the other way, and if the majority of my constituents wanted me to support the franchise fee, I would have no choice but to support it. But I think everybody in Ramsey ought to address this issue at the ballot box.
Thank you. And then same question to Mr. Westehoff. Should that final decision on these types of funding choices be made by the voters or by the council after public input and discussion is received?
Yeah, I think that's an important question. And, you know, I'm no lawyer, but my understanding of the situation is that it would needed to have been rejected by the Charter Commission. So the Charter Commission is an independent body of appointed judges, or from judges that got appointed, and they're the ones who oversee what the charter of the city looks like and if things are legal and whatnot. So if it would have failed the charter, my understanding is that it would have gone to a ballot issue because there was a disagreement between the council and the charter. So unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, they agreed. They both agreed that it was a legal fee, a tax on the residents through this franchise fee. And do I think that it should have gone on a ballot? If we do that, then we're going to be voting for everything.
Thank you. And then you'll get the last of these related questions. So, Mr. Westehoff, both of you discuss road repair and management as a key issue at your respective websites. Please explain what you like or dislike, or what you think is sensible or not sensible about the city's road pavement plan and the capital improvement plan that is scheduled through 2029.
You know, I think the overarching thing that I've learned in my experience of even just running for city council, as well as my years in Planning Commission, is that a lot of the decisions that we think are made off the cuff have been in progress for years to come. I think that the capital improvement plan, the CFP, is a great set of guidelines for where the city should go and where the city should focus. I understand that different situations force different things on occasion, on a case-by-case basis, but I appreciate the fact that we can say that 161st by Central Park is probably going to get redone in the next two years. The problem I have a lot of times is that data is not readily available. I feel like the city can do a better job of explaining some of these details and explaining the long-term plan better to the residents.
Thank you. Again, I'll kind of abbreviate the question, Mr. Walker, and that is, please explain what you like or dislike, or what is sensible or not sensible about the city's road pavement plan and the capital improvement plan that is scheduled through 2029.
Touching on something that Matt said is, you know, I think the city as a whole can do a better job at getting information out to the residents. You know, I don't know when Matt got his hands on the capital improvement thing, but it was, it's not easy to find out there. And that's something that we need to address. So, because a lot of things do look willy-nilly, just, you know, they sit up here and, hey, let's, you know, do this, without a plan, and when there really is one somewhere. Again, you know, I'm not in favor of the way that the city does their road projects now. I think we need to go through the budget line by line by line and start saving the residents some tax money and using that towards our road situation that we have.
Thank you. Then, Mr. Walker, you get the next question. Post-COVID, how do you see the city reducing or leveling the tax burden on its residents?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Post-COVID, how do you see the city reducing or leveling the tax burden on its residents?
To be honest with you, I don't know that anybody in the city has even thought of that at this point, when they just passed the franchise fee during COVID, which increases everybody's taxes $168 a year. Again, you know, it's about transparency and smart spending. We really have to go through- We really have to go through, and we're going to have to make tough choices within the city, and we're going to have to put residents' needs before the city staff's wants at times in there. And they're going to be hard choices to make, but it's something we're going to have to do because there's a lot of people that are under financial hardship right now, and we cannot keep adding to their hardships because the city can't get their act together and get a budget that we can live with.
Thank you. And then, same question to Mr. Westerhoff. Post-COVID, how do you see the city reducing or leveling the tax burden on its residents?
Yeah, it's a great question, and one of the things that caught me off guard is that it's post-COVID. I mean, from my perspective, we should always be focusing on that. I'm not one that says we should have a tax for everything. The thing that I like about the franchise fee is it protects that road funding source from other agendas, from other items, from a community center. I'm not saying a community center is a bad thing, but it will take us years to get to a point where the community at large can support such a big investment. So I think it's not necessarily a post-COVID mentality. It's something that the city should be focused on every day in terms of making sure that we are as efficient with our spending as possible. But we only know what we're efficient at when we listen to the residents in terms of what they want from us as a community. And I think that's where listening and proper leadership and being transparent about data is extremely important.
Thank you. This question will go to Mr. Westerhoff. Where do you prioritize a new bridge across the Mississippi River from the Champlin-Dayton area into Ramsey? And what impact do you think this would have on Highway 10 traffic and access for Ramsey residents in Ward Two that might be headed to the Southern Twin Cities?
You know, it's something that's been on the comprehensive plan for 2040, and I would appreciate it to get done at some point in that. However, a comprehensive plan is also something that is guidelines rather than strict adherence. So it's not something that is a foreign thought by any means, but that involves a long-winded conversation with many, many departments between us and Dayton and the county and the federal government because it involves Highway 10. And there's just a lot of things that happen, and it took 10 to 14 years to get some of these intersections on 10 taken care of. I can't imagine it would be a quick conversation, but I think what matters is having the vision to say, yes, I think the bridge to Dayton is important, having the relationship with Dayton where they're willing to have that bridge and see it as a benefit because we want them to come to Ramsey for some of our amenities in the core, too. And I think that is where the long-term vision of what we do as a city is extremely important.
Thank you. And then, same question to you, Mr. Walker. Where do you prioritize a new bridge across the Mississippi River from the Champlin-Dayton area into Ramsey? And what impact do you think this will have on Highway 10 traffic and access for Ramsey residents in Ward Two who would be headed to the Southern Twin Cities?
Well, first, I can tell you that I drive down 169 from Anoka all the way down into Minnetonka every day. So would it have an effect? It would make life a lot easier for a lot of people. To be honest with you, it's not something that's really high on my priority list to push. I think the city itself has issues that we need to take care of here. We need to get our roads fixed before we start building more roads. And like Matt said, it's a very long-winded conversation with lots and lots of agencies in there, and it's not going to be something that is going to be done for a very, very long time.
Well, I don't think either of you will be upset. This will be the last question. It's actually kind of a fun question. It's a League of Women voter priority. What is your vision for a pollinator-friendly Ramsey? And this will go to Mr. Walker first. A pollinator-friendly Ramsey.
I don't even think I understand.
The bees.
Bees?
The bees.
Yeah, I, I think that what we could do in our, what we could do in our parks to attract more bees in there would be great. To be honest with you, it's not something I've given a whole lot of thought.
Fair enough. Then we'll conclude the question part of this with Mr. Westerhoff. What is your vision of a pollinator-friendly Ramsey?
Yeah, I think that is a very fun question, to be honest. And it's funny to me because my wife keeps pushing for more pollinator stuff in our backyard and in our front yard. And I think, you know, one of the nice things is we do have so much of a rural community and feel here in Ramsey. It wouldn't be hard to help incentivize some people to have more acknowledgement or knowledge around what it takes to make a pollinator-friendly community. And honestly, it doesn't get enough credit for how important bees are to our ecosystem. As a pollinator, that's what gives us almost everything at the very core of it. So I love the question. I love the thought of it, and I would look forward to exploring it more.
Thank you. Well, we move to closing statements, and because, Matt, you had actually the first answer of the evening, I will go to Brian to give us his closing statement, and then, Matt, you will wrap up our evening. So, Brian, one minute for your closing statement.
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event tonight. I'm running for, I'm running for city council because I want to make Ramsey a better place, the same way that Matt wants to make Ramsey a better place. I believe that we have two different visions on a lot of issues for it. I started this because the residents in Ward Two were not being heard. And the residents, you're the bosses of the city. You're the ones that run this city. The people that sit in this chamber right here are only here to do what you need them to do. And I would encourage everybody to go to my website, walkerforramsey.org, find out more about me. Feel free to reach out to me at any time, and I would appreciate your vote on November 3rd.
Thank you. And, Matt, will you wrap us up?
Yeah, and similar thanks to the League of Women Voters and all of the sponsors for tonight's event. It's nice to have honest dialogues, and one of the things I think is amazing is that oftentimes, honest dialogues are missed in politics. There's so much spin and so much appeasement of the extremes that the 80% of us that agree on 80% of the things get left out. And I think one of the things that is important to remember is that the city and the stuff that we do is not extremes. It's roads. It's public safety. It's the aspects of our life that we take just for granted. And I think the leadership that needs, that is needed in the city has to reflect that. We don't need to reflect the shouting of either side of any particular issue. We need level heads and just conscious choice and beliefs. I'll wrap up by saying my name is Matt Westerhoff. It is incredibly hard to spell, and it's pretty hard to say, but I assure you, filling in the bubble next to my name is pretty easy. My website is available, and the other advantage is I'm pretty easy to Google. So any questions, feel free to reach out, even if it's, you know, walking up to my house. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt and Brian. One thing we do know for sure is the next Ward Two council member's last name will start with a W. Thank you both for sharing your views with the public and for participating in this Meet the Candidates forum. Thanks to our co-sponsors, the North Suburban Optimist Club and the Metro North Chamber of Commerce, as well as QCTV for presenting this forum. The League of Women Voters has supported informed voting for over 100 years. In the year 2020, we have many options on how we will vote. Please exercise your right to vote. For more election information, visit MNvotes.org. Thank you and good evening.